7 o'clock, August 23rd, the U.S. State Council meeting. Steve, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
McKiever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Cherks, Absinthe, Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
All right, before you, you have the minutes from the August 1st public hearing meeting.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I will move to approve with the caveat that the audio link will be added once it's been made available to the clerk.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have before you the August 1st 2022 regular council meeting minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'll also move to approve those with the same caveat that the audio link will be added once it's been made available to the clerk. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready permission for visitors to speak?
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure, my name is John Rostache, I'm the former communications director for the city of Bussiris, or communications coordinator, and it's my pleasure to introduce Bonnie Welsh, who is our new multimedia communications coordinator. She's going to be handling our Facebook page, and she'll be handling all the Access TV, once we get that up and running, and doing the live stream and everything. We're very fortunate that Bonnie has joined our team. She has experience in some media broadcasts, and she also has a four-year communications degree from the Ohio State University. So we're very fortunate and very proud to have Bonnie as a member of our team. So Bonnie, would you introduce yourself and say hello?
Hi, everyone. I'm Bonnie Welsh. I am a native of Bussiris, so born and raised, Jenny knows me for years. Yeah, so I graduated from Ohio State with an agriculture communications degree back in 2020, and locally, I'm a 4-H advisor here in the county.
Welcome, Bonnie.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, John.
Moving on to communications and petitions. We received a letter of resignation from our clerk, who is moving on to a new life.
Sorry.
And we're grateful to you very much. But that just needs to be accepted and filed.
I would make a motion to accept with regret.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
I'd like to say aye, but...
I know. How can we stand in your way?
Thank you, guys. First, you've been amazing.
When you qualified me?
Yes, absolutely.
When you published your photo of the ring, we kind of figured this would stay with us.
Yeah, well, I feel like everybody knew it was coming. None of us anticipated, including myself, this fast. So I probably shouldn't announce this, but when a Buella is letting you live at Ripri for eight months, you kind of just have to jump on that.
Absolutely.
I think on behalf of all of us, we want to say, and congratulations and thank you for the diligence you did put in, and we wish you well.
You all, thank you all. You've been amazing, and again, if it weren't for relocation, you guys have been fantastic, and it pains me to believe. So I'm going to try not to cry on TV. Our Facebook Live.
We'll move on then. All right. Any other communications or petitions?
No.
All right, moving on, standing committee reports, planning?
I have nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
No, no report.
Health and safety?
No report, Madam President.
Finance?
Finance has no issue.
We have economic development?
No report at this time, Madam President.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
They had a meeting a few weeks ago that I was unable to attend. I had not seen any minutes from that meeting, but nothing pressing has been passed on either.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I do want to bring up, and I hope we can get this to the mayor's attention. I had several complaints, and I also live at the south end of Poplar. Lucas Street, they did not put the four-way stop for the Bratwurst Festival. And I got quite a few calls from local neighbors that with the semis coming down that street, without the four-way stop at Lucas. I understand they did do it in 2020, or, yeah, I believe it was. But if they could look into that to possibly do it next year.
If you would take the time to just send Jeff Dunn an email, that's where that would go to.
I already contacted the service.
That's you, well, to Jeff Dunn.
Yeah, I understand. So that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? All right, since we have no reports, we're moving on. We have reports from city officers, the mayor is on vacation, he did submit a report. The 55th edition of the Bratwurst Festival is... Do we have no reports?
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I know, you're emotional. It's okay. "The 55th Edition of the Bratwurst Festival is a wrap. I hope all the folks who worked so hard to make the festival a success, and now how much we appreciate the hard work. Thank you to Kevin Myers, the board, as well as many volunteers, who can be proud of their efforts once again. The crowds were large again, unfortunately, the rain came down at precisely the wrong time on Saturday, but it couldn't be helped. Thanks also to Jeff Dunn and the Fine Street Group, who kept the midway clean during the festival, and who also worked early Saturday morning to return the streets to normalcy. I drove through Sunday morning, and as usual, the streets were clean and everything looked great. Congressman Bob Laub was here on Friday and had a great time meeting folks and renewing friendships. Governor DeWine toured the midway on Saturday afternoon and had nothing but praise for our festival and the people of Bussiris. On behalf of the city of Bussiris, we sincerely thank Director Myers and everyone who worked so hard to showcase our community and its German heritage." Safety Service Director's report. Do you have these referrals already on here?
Do I have one? I'm sorry.
Do you have his referrals already on here?
Um, no, he told me the later. I haven't looked down here though. He needs to look at them.
Okay. First thing he has is referrals. I'd like to refer the city properties that did not, and I'm assuming he means sell, back to the public lands and buildings and finance committees. The other lots did well. We'll have info for you at the committee meeting. I would also like to refer the 2023 OPWC to Service and Finance Committee. The salary line is needing an adjustment of $20,000 due to the extra person this year than last year. Two milling and paving. The next round of milling and paving will be started in September. Forma, I'm not sure what that stands for.
Insurance.
I know it's insurance, but I don't know what the acronym means. Insurance meeting was last week. Our current medical health insurance is proposed to go up 7.25%. We've met with the insurance committee and chose to go with a different medical plan within Forma that will only have an increase of 0.33%. Number four, public entity PEP. We met with our city insurance carrier, and it's going to go up 14%. Spooktacular, we have started preparations for the event, which will be held at Ola Park on September, sorry, on Saturday, October 15th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is going to be another great community event. RA Boars Excavating, says they have finished up the Highland and Reed manhole project. There are some restorations that still need to be finished up. Driven Excavating, says they're working on the West Warren Street sewer line and manhole repairs. Reminder, trash containers are not to exceed 45 gallons or 35 pounds. We prefer handles on the containers, please. Police and Dispatch Contract, I would like to refer the Police and Dispatch Contract to Finance and Service Committees.
Let's talk for you what he just referred.
So for the Police and Dispatch Contract to, he's got it, to Finance and Service.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe this should be Finance and Health and Safety.
I don't think it's Service, yeah.
I said he wasn't sure. He knew Finance for sure, so...
Yeah, I don't think it's supposed to be Service.
Okay, okay.
I amend my motion to Finance, Health, and Safety. I'll still second.
I have a first by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The city properties that did not sell to public lands and buildings and finance?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The 2023 OPWC to Service and Finance?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that's his report.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping they would be here, but I'll have to wait until Thursday, but I would like them to take a look at the main entrance to Walmart office. That's a big hole there, but it's been there for quite a while, that I've seen many people hit as they're pulling in or pulling out. So it is on the street section, it's not the parking lot. It's, it'd be nice if they somehow get out there and patch that.
Or maybe when Mr. Wagner's here.
I don't know, not when we're here.
Right, but thank you for bringing it up. All right. Law Director?
Not too much, so... About as long as I've been here, we've been talking to this group that leases the cell tower out back, Verizon, I think now owns the lease. They want to lease an additional 1,000 square feet at an additional $1,100 and some dollars per month. So I think that I need a referral so that we can discuss that to Finance and Public Lands. And then, other than that, I know there's been some discussion about derelict properties, and the one on West Warren caught on fire again, which is not great, obviously. So I've been in contact with a couple of different asbestos remediation companies. First, we have to check them for asbestos before we can knock them down. So we are working on that. And then the only other thing, the old trailer park that was on the rivers, on Sandusky River, is now owned by the city of Bussiris. So those buildings will be inspected and then probably knocked down as well. And then I don't know what you guys wanted to do with it after that.
Those ones out on the street?
Yeah.
Towards the street?
Like the garage-looking things? Yeah. Yep.
So...
That got forfeited to us through a foreclosure sale, where nobody bid on it at the sheriff's sale, and then we were the only person that had any interest in it. And we're mowing.
The old rivers edge on the way to your house? The mobile home park?
Before the, the east side of the bridge.
The trailers are gone, but on the road, there's a little garage and apartment.
Yeah, where Cycle Tech actually started.
Yeah.
So in relation to the Warren Street House, are you in the process of, you know, when we're getting phone calls from the residents in that area, is it safe to say that you're in the process of getting it started to be demolished?
Yeah.
Do you have a timeline in mind? Do you have this year?
This year, absolutely. I think I have, because it's owned by somebody that we cannot find. I have to get a warrant to go in there. And so the judge will issue me a warrant, but, so it's a couple-step process. A warrant to go in there to get the asbestos guys in there, and then I have to publish their bids.
Have you checked the jail on that guy?
I, um, I do.
Because...
In the Ohio...
His name and...
The Ohio Offender Registry, so the prison system and the jails. I can't check every jail individually. I can't check all the jails collectively. But I do keep tabs on our jail, and then also the state prison.
But this, he seemed to be in trouble part of that.
Yeah.
The other question I have is the house next door. There's a blue house next door to that one that has problems, that there's, um... It's violating any health...
403.
If I...
Across the street. No.
It's ripest on the same side of the street. It's got issues with mattresses and other items in the yard and grass. It's...
That's one of those where I know the homeowner, and I know where they, you know, they show up to court, they're in court. The judge isn't going to put them in jail for property maintenance. So you only have so big of a stick on those cases. I would like to eventually talk this county into hopefully foreclosing on taxes or something, just to divest her of that property, because they're not going to maintain it.
I know several area residents there would be very glad to see that cleaned up, and let alone, they may be even interested in purchasing the property so that nothing like that can be there.
Yeah, I absolutely understand that one, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But that one's, I mean, that one's in court, and there's only so much coercion I can muster.
I totally understand.
Any else?
That's all I got.
All right, anybody else?
Do we need to refer those?
Yes.
I need a motion to refer the tower to public lands and buildings and finance?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have several referrals. We need to appropriate funds in the general fund for a $500 donation to the police K-9 unit, and a $5,414.49 reimbursement to Fire Department Personal Services. This is due to a firefighter who left us, and he's reimbursing us for uniforms and things. So we just want to get that back into their budget. We need an additional appropriation of $20,000 in the Parks and Recreation Fund and Personal Services due to an additional person working in the parks this year. The Service Director had referenced that in his report. The Water Works Fund needs an appropriation of $250,000 in contractual services. This is for the HVAC replacement. They are working on that now. So we signed a contract a couple of weeks ago, so I need to get this in place. And we also need $39,000 in materials and supplies because of increased cost of chemicals and dues and subscriptions. So I will have the breakdown for Thursday's meeting.
All right, we have a motion to refer the above listed to Finance?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
McKiever was first?
Yes.
Okay.
Huh?
$250, that's from the engineer, and that comes from them?
Yes, yes, that's the reimbursement that we got.
Plus all?
Yeah, for the faulty equipment that was put in.
Okay, before you, you have the Treasurers' Report. Can I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved, second.
Oh, my word. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by DM Wireball, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I thought Neil was going to be here to talk about this tonight, but this is a quote for the bulletproof glass and walls down in the Fire Department that they want to get...
Police Department.
Police Department, yeah, that they want to get approved.
So that's going to have to get referred to Finance as well. And probably Health and Safety.
Health and Safety just in case, but probably just really Finance. So moved, second.
Finance and Health and Safety?
Mm-hmm. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Brenton Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll wait for you.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Yep. We also have before you the Fire Department report. Need a motion to accept and file?
So moved, second.
A motion by Mark McKiever, a second by Kevin Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And... This is also part of it.
Just the snapshot?
Yeah. It'll all go together, right?
Aye.
I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitor input regarding the reports of standing and special committees and city officers. Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance number 35-2022, sorry, 35-2022, amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds with a sum of $1,850 to the materials and supplies line item, and $2,540 to the capital outlay line item, with both of four said line items being within the Police Department category within the program, one security of persons and property, sorry, persons and property subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. Proposed ordinance number 36-2022. Repealing ordinance 30-2022 and replacing it with ordinance 36-2022. Amending and supplementing ordinance number 54-2021 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2022 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds with a sum of $2,095.36 to the materials and supplies line item within the Police Department category within the program, one security of persons and property subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated safety forces levy funds with a sum of $30,000 to the materials and supplies line item within the Police Department category within the safety forces levy subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated park and recreation land funds with a sum of $13,000 to the personal services line item within the parks and playgrounds category within the park and recreation land subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated opioid settlement funds with a sum of $4,037.15 to the contractual services line item within the general administrative category within the opioid settlement subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated solid waste funds with a sum of $15,000 to the materials and supplies line item within the solid waste category within the solid waste subparagraph, and declaring an emergency.
Do I have a motion to accept these as the first readings?
So moved, second.
Was it Mr. McKiever? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public participation on the legislation being read for the first time? Moving on, consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
Proposed ordinance number 26-2022, amending the traffic control map and file established by ordinance 2778 in sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinances of the state of Bussiris, Ohio, and adding additional signage, all as detailed herein.
Do I have a motion to accept this as the final reading?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKiever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Allowing public participation on the legislation read for a final time. Referring back to originating committee. Proposed legislation 26-2022, refer back to Health and Safety. Proposed ordinance 35-2022, refer back to Finance. And proposed resolution 36-2022, refer back to Finance.
That was supposed to be proposed ordinance 36-2022, I'm sorry.
Okay. Community report on pending legislation, Health and Safety.
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 26-2022, the traffic control amendment and signage as amended.
Finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 35-2022, the appropriations, and Finance is also favorable to proposed resolution 36-2022, the repeal and replace of ordinance number 30-2022.
Okay, and again, it should be proposed ordinance 36-2022.
But repealing 30, right?
Right, but...
It's an ordinance, not a proposed resolution.
As a typo, it was, it says resolution should be ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's not your fault.
I should have read it.
I read it, too.
I knew it.
We're good little minions. Okay. Further consideration of pending legislation. Ordinance number 35-2022, appropriations for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 35-2022. Do I hear a motion to suspend rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, and a second by Mr. Myers.
Okay, McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 35-2022?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, and a second by Mr. Wireball.
Young?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance 36-2022, repeal and replacement of ordinance number 30-2022 for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance 36-2022. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Myers.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 36-2022?
So moved, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, and a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Potter?
Young.
Oh, it was Young? I apologize. It was Mr. Young.
Potter?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 36-2022 is duly adopted. Ordinance number 26-2022. For the final reading of the Traffic Commission amendments and signage. I need a motion to adopt?
So moved, second.
Okay.
Terry?
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
Myers?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Ordinance 26-2022 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anybody's had the chance to look into it. Is the ad hoc committee that was created for council clerk hiring and employment still considered ineffective, or do we need to appoint anyone?
I think we should create a new one, just for safety services, for safety's sake.
I would like to move then, at that point, that we appoint all seven members of council, as well as council president, to said ad hoc committee.
So for ad hoc for employment, you are making a motion to appoint all seven?
All seven sitting council members, plus the council president. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to request it be put on the agenda that that committee will be meeting this Thursday. And if we don't need it, we can cancel it, but I'd like to go ahead and get that announcement made tomorrow, that the committee members have called the meeting immediately following the regular committee meetings. the regular committee meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
I would also, Madam President, like to request a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers. I need a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have to do, we have to...
Yes, roll call, roll call. Thank you, sorry. Okay, hold, hold on, I'm not ready. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick Absent? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:30 p.m. All right. At 7:39, coming out of executive session.
I'd like to make a motion that we exit executive session.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever. Roll call, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick Absent? Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Okay. Since we're still kind of working in the new and miscellaneous business, was it Kelly that did?
Yeah.